Meetings over Zoom or other electronic means during the COVID crisis. I'm supposed to tell you all you're being recorded and you possibly are also being broadcast on the local cable TV station. As we've been doing pretty well with this now, this is maybe our fifth meeting, but I like to say if for some reason we crash and can't get back, all matters are continued till next month's scheduled hearing. But hopefully we'll get through them all tonight like we have on days before. Why don't I just do a roll call of the board members, Mr. Tamkin?
Present.
Mr. Goldman is not here. No, so Ms. Perardi?
Present.
And Mr. Friedenberg. All right, so I'll have to designate someone as we go along to participate because we need three voting members. I was wrong. We only have four out of our five members here tonight. All right, so the first order of business is to review and approve the minutes. If there are no changes, then I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the minutes from the September 17th hearing.
Someone second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. So the first matter which I'll read case number one is 926 Greendale Avenue. Mary De Mayo applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for special permit under sections 3.1.5, 7.5.2, any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the addition of an accessory dwelling unit. The property is located at 926 Greendale Avenue in the single residence A district. And who do we have on this matter?
Mary De Mayo.
All right, good evening.
Ronald De Mayo, the builder.
Okay, so why don't you describe what it is you want to do?
And I would like to put on an addition. For my brother who is a disabled vet. And we're looking to put on a two car garage with the addition off the back for him to live in because I'm basically his caretaker right now. And I think we've submitted the plans. There are some things that we still that like we got a couple of emails this afternoon that you need a couple more things from us and those are all in the works right now. To get to you.
So this will be new, new construction?
Correct.
So let me try to run through the comments we've received from various town officials and then I have a question I want to run through. Needham fires indicated that they're okay with the project. The police have no problem with the project. The building commissioner has no problem. The planning board had no comment. And we've received two comments from the health department. The first is they want us to impose pest oil condition and then today they've mentioned that there may be an issue about your septic system. You'll have to satisfy them before you can expand.
John, there was a
My first quote. I'm sorry, is that it?
I just wanted to add another comment. The planning board identified that the unit size was larger than was required, which is 850 square feet.
Okay, I didn't see that in writing.
It was in the, it was in their comments.
Was it? I thought, I thought they concluded with no comment.
Now they says that 850 minimum.
Didn't even, that, that, that is on my that is on my series of questions. My, my, my first is, is that I couldn't see on the plan because they're very small. How far you are from the sideline? When you do this new construction, can someone tell me?
Ron, do you know that one?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have it in front of me, but we, we met this, the town setbacks that were required. And as far as the extra 22 square
The town requirement is 25 feet, but let's take it one at a time. Let's, you don't know what the setback is and I
I don't have it in front of me. No, I don't.
Does someone have the full plan, the plot plan?
Yeah.
The original plot plan, is that what we're looking for?
No. Do you have the one from?
The one that shows the construction.
Yeah, with from Ward proposed.
Yeah, hold on one second.
How far is it from the sideline?
That one I do not have in front of me. I'm sorry.
I might have it, hold on a second.
I don't have the one from Ward. I have the architect.
So I have it here, but let me just see if I can blow it up. So the the back setback is 24.8. And the, in the front is 16.4.
Well, neither of those comply with the requirements. You're in single residence A, right? The single residence A front setback is 30 and the side setback is 25.
Side setback. Yeah, those dimensions I just gave you were the side setback. So you, the front?
We can't build closer than 25 feet to the sideline. Unless you want to ask for other relief.
Well, according so I'm looking at this on my phone, so it's hard to see, but according to the engineer, what we were told was that he met the, the required setbacks. So let me just see if I can.
Well, I mean, the front setback looks fine. But the side is close and you said 24.8, which is too close.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't read it.
Proposed addition.
Side setback is 15.
In the front.
In the front and isn't it 34 in the back?
34.6.
John, is this SRA or SRB?
It's A.
It says A, but I mean, I, I just questioned that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, the lot is undersized. The lot was created by variance. But it's in and I think, I think unless I'm mistaken, single residence A, the side setback requirement is 25 feet.
Oh, you're correct on that.
So, you know, I don't, I don't I don't believe the house is currently non-conforming. So, you know, they can't create by this construction a new non-conformity.
Can we just repeat again? If we don't actually know, we're sort of guessing. What, what are the side setbacks? Because I keep on hearing confusion and the, between the front, the rear and inside, but what, what is the front, the rear and the two sides?
Well, according to the one that I have in front of me, it's the side setback closest to the street is 16.4. The back of the house is 24.6. And the front is
30. Right?
Well, the existing house is 26. And this is set way back beyond that. So it's, it's, I think it's
I don't think there's a problem with the front setback. It's just, and there's clearly not one with the rear setback, but the question is that side setback.
I can't say something on what I'm looking at. It says side setback is 15.
That's, that's single residence B, your single residence A.
Doesn't say that on that though.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, you know, why, why, why don't we go on through some other stuff? Whatever. So I mean, I have a, a list of questions that come from the requirements for an an ADU. The first, it has to be subordinate in size and I don't think there's any question about that. You have to maintain the appearance and character of a single family. I personally have no problem with that. One, the unit has to be owner occupied. I think you meet that. The other one has to be a family member or caregiver and it's going to be a family member. Total occupancy cannot be more than five unrelated people. The the accessory dwelling unit cannot exceed and that your plans show it in excess of 850.
Yeah, it's 22 square feet over when the architect Ron Jerrick met with David Roach, the commissioner. He had said to him that he had no problem with the extra four feet because of the circumstances where he was a disabled person.
I, I, I'm, you know, I'm sorry. The zoning law is the zoning law that applies to everyone and there's no exception for you know, who's living there.
Okay, well.
So this has to be redesigned so that it's doesn't exceed 850 square feet.
Yeah, we can, we can take out the 22, the 22 square feet.
Okay, so there has to be a parking space for each dwelling unit and like I think your application says you have four parking spaces.
Correct.
Okay, so the next requirement is you have to have adequate sewage and drainage and I think the public health department has raised a question about sewers. You're on a septic system. Have you looked into whether you need to extend it or connect the town sewer?
Yeah, we, the, it's, the septic system that's there now is listed as a four bedroom. And it's listed as a four bedroom with the town. And there's actually only three bedrooms in the house right now. So this would, would be the fourth bedroom that they're adding.
Well, I'm going to leave it to the health department to, you know, we approve this, we can put in a condition, you have to satisfy the health department.
Yes.
The, the interns can't detract from a single family appearance and I don't think that's a question. There has to be an interior doorway connecting the units. Do we have that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so and all the stairways have to be enclosed and I think that is the case.
Yep.
And then, you know, it's, it's been our practice to add a condition that if the building commissioner asks to approve who's living in the unit and you don't respond within 30 days, he has a right to terminate the permit. That's initiated by a written request from the building inspector. And if he were to do that, you'd have a right of appeal back to the ZBA, but we've been conditioning all the permits on that.
Okay.
Other questions from the board members? You're, you're mute, Howard.
I just had a question about how they connect. Where's the connection point? I just am trying to look for it.
If it's
Garage.
Right, it's in the garage.
But does this unit connect to the house or do you have to go through the garage?
Through the garage.
Through the garage.
Okay, I don't think that meets the requirement of the bylaw that says there has to be an entrance. I don't know. I have to think about that.
There's a, there's a, there's a separate entrance for the unit itself and then there's to get into the, the main house through the garage.
What the bylaw says, an interior doorway shall be provided between each living unit is a means of access for purposes of emergency response. I don't know. Are there other questions from the board?
So that sounds like there's a number of questions. Can you hear me? This is Howard. Can you hear me?
I hear you, Howard.
Okay. So it seems like there's a number of questions that need to be addressed through a minimum of revised plan. So I'm just, it'd be difficult to take action tonight based on what we have.
I would agree with you. We need a a plot plan that we can actually see and see the two sides, the rear and the front. And determine if this actually complies. And at least there was some question whether it's an SRA or an SRB. The application says SRA, right? And then we have some sorry.
There's an earlier decision. Allowing the lot as an undersized lot says single residence A.
And what was that decision?
It's, it's in the package.
1960.
Yeah, wow. I think we need to have the plot plan sort of, what is the plot plan say? So, and the other thing is it's an interesting concept whether a, an enclosed garage's interior. I can see an argument that it is. I don't know if that's the intent of the bylaw. But I want to ponder that a little bit, but I, I think right now I've blown it up to 250% and I can't see it. The plot plan.
Daphne, is there anyone here from the public on this?
I see if there's any raised hands. There are six, we have six members from the public. And there are no raised hands among those who are attending.
Well, I, I, I think we need to continue this until one month, we're in November to our December hearing. And you need to come back with a plot plan that shows the sideline being no closer than 25 feet. And you need to have the accessory dwelling unit not exceed 850 square feet. I think everyone on the board has to reread the provision of the bylaw to decide whether we think passing through the garage interior doorway between the two units.
Can you repeat that again?
I don't, I don't know if there's a way. I didn't look that closely at your plans. I, I didn't look that closely to see if you could put a doorway directly into the house.
There will be a doorway in the garage to the house and a separate doorway outside of the addition to the house.
But the passage to the house from the unit will be through the garage.
Correct.
Correct.
But that, that's our question.
So in the interest of time, if we satisfy these requirements that you're asking us, so we don't have to meet in December and I, I don't know if you know, I know the, not that it mattered, probably matters to you people, but the underlying condition, the the person that's moving in there, mother has passed away, he's living alone now and that reason they're putting the addition on is so they can take care of him. If we have to wait to December, that means we won't get out of the ground until the spring. If we meet these requirements, can we do it? Can we get this passed providing we, we give you this information? So we can get the balls, ball rolling?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to start construction right away anyway. The, the permit, even if we voted to approve it and you have a ton of conditions. You're, there's a period of time we ready decision, then we record the decision, then there's an appeal period. And so I'm, I'm supportive of the project, just to let you know where I am. I, I can't see what I'm looking at. And I don't know, Daphne, do you have the original plot plan there that you can actually see?
It's in the same, it's in the same manner as you're seeing it.
Okay.
Not like an electronic, an electronic copy. It was a Xerox of a, of a copy. That's what, so we could get an electronic person, then I could go ahead and screen share it, but you're going to be screen sharing a Xerox. A copy.
That's all I have, that's why.
Kathy, why don't you act on this one? I mean, what do you, what do you think? Couldn't we approve this subject to them revising the plans? Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I mean, you know, if it's, if it's closer than 25 feet, it's going to be a significant revision.
Right. And I mean, I think there are a few different things that need to be revised. That's what's kind of tough about it. If it was just a side setback and they were off by a little bit, then maybe. But I think it sounds like there's a few different things that we have to get clarity on.
And, and someone mentioned something else that there were two items with the Board of Health. I understand the septic system. There's a, a question whether it's a three or four, whether it's compliant or not.
No, the, 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 the health department, we ought to talk about that. I mean, the health department wrote a comment that we should require a pest inspection and pest control. My personal opinion is that I am not supportive of that in connection with a residence. We did that in connection with the 40B down by the congregational church. And I perceive that as an entirely different matter about disturbing rodents and all when you have a large commercial project. But I, I don't think as a matter of zoning decisions, we ought to be getting into pest.
I, I don't disagree with you. This is a family member living in an accessory unit. I don't think that, I, I would, I would concur on that. I just don't think we have enough to actually write a decision because we don't know what that plot plan is going to say, unfortunately. I think we could say yeah, we could say that an issue would
Want to make a motion to continue?
I, 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 I just like to also discuss the pass through. So that's, you know, you, you can think about it a little bit more, but it either works or it doesn't work. The interior pass through. I, 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 I would be comfortable with it, I think. I think you have an interior space connecting the two units. You're not going outside. You're not climbing a, a ladder. You're not climbing outdoor stairs. You can connect it through. If the building inspector is, is comfortable with that, I'd like to get a determination on that one from him. Then I think I'm comfortable with it in this situation.
I would, yeah, I would agree with that. I, I think it's probably the intent of the bylaws. I'm assuming also for just means of egress if someone needed to get out. And it sounds like it has its own doorway that faces to the outside, correct? So it's really just passing through to the interior, not as a means of getting out, but of just getting to the main house. And so
More getting in rather than getting out.
Correct.
I agree. John?
Yeah, and I, I could live with that. I think, but I think we ought to ask the building inspector to focus on this and make a ruling. So shall we continue this till December?
Unfortunately, I think we have to. There's just a few outstanding things that we need to figure out.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'd love to just vote on it and let you get going here, but I think we just have just an open issue. I don't know what we're actually approving and that's the problem. It's not just substituting a plan.
I understand. It, so as far as the setback is concerned, is that something I should go to the building department on as far as the requirement?
No, I think you have to make sure it complies and it can't be greater than what 25?
25, I believe is the side setback and then a single residence A.
Yeah, that's a big slice coming off the building. I mean, you're, you're off by nine feet. I think that's one reason it's difficult to approve this because this thing may be changed substantially.
Yeah, and, and that's why I, I, I think something's getting lost somewhere because the, the architect that we hired went to the town and made sure that we may met all the requirements. So I, I, I have to speak to him to find out where he came up with that setback. And I agree, I, I'll find out from him what determined where he come up with that determination that we were, we met the setbacks.
And I think we can put you on first thing for the December meeting, so you don't have to wait the whole evening.
That'd be great.
But yeah, I think we got to find that out. But it's, I'm supportive. It's an attractive thing and I understand that you're, with, with respect to your brother and you want to assist it. That's the point of the bylaw.
Right, I'm, I'm supportive as well. This doesn't, you know, this doesn't mean that we're not supportive of the project. We are, we just have to meet the very specific guidelines that are set out in the bylaws and we can't do that right now.
Understood.
And I, I agree. So this is continued until December. Sorry, we can't act on it tonight, but I think that's where we are.
All right, in the interim, we'll get you the answers to all those questions that you had.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that and just
You, you, I thought you, you
John actually made the motion, so I'll talk John's motion, Kathy. You can say.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Case number two, 27 Warren Street. Kathy L Livingston owners made application to the Board of Appeals for special permit under sections 1.4.6, 7.5.2 and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the change, extension, alteration and enlargement of a lawful pre-existing non-conforming building associated with the addition of a first floor bathroom. Properties located at 27 Warren Street in the single residence B district. I think we have Ms. Livingston. Are you, are you representing yourself here?
I, well, I'm here with the architect, David Michael Johnson.
Okay, we see him.
Okay, so would you like for me to give you like an overview of the project?
Sure, just give us a summary of what it is you want to do.
Okay. So I am trying to, I've been a resident of this home for almost 40 years and have decided that I would like to be able to age in place and it would be helpful in doing that to have decided that I would like to be able to age in place, and it would be helpful in doing that to plan to have a, a full bath, that's with a shower, not a tub, on the first floor. So, um, in preparing for this, I hired David, who's done work in the neighborhood, has a good eye for how to make attractive additions to older homes. And speaking of the age of the home, when I was researching, getting the material for this project, or to get a special permit, the quitclaim deed that is filed in the lawful registry, um, shows that the lot, and I don't know if the house at that time was established in eighteen eighty-eight. And when I went to the town assessor, the first assessment on record for a building is nineteen fifteen, so the house was actually built sometime between eighteen eighty-eight and nineteen fifteen. Um, so the issue is the existing lot is non-conforming, as the summary says. Uh, and so I'd like David to speak to this a little bit, and he can give you more detail. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Yeah, so to, uh, c- continue, um, uh, as Kathy said, the lot was created in eighteen eighty-eight and the house built between nineteen fifteen, we're in a single residence B, uh, zoning district, um, town sewer, town water. Um, the current non-conformity of the house uh, down the left side, where we're looking to build the addition off the back, off the rear left corner. Um, the house at its closest point off the existing side lot line there is, uh, three feet. And in looking at, we're looking to build a, uh, uh, ten and a half by ten and a half addition for this bathroom. Um, basically a hundred and ten and a half square feet. And we tried to get it off the, to make it less non-conforming than what the current house is non-conforming. And so our current side on the addition, um, is, uh, five feet. We, we pushed it two feet off the existing left rear corner of the house to get our, uh, side lot line at five feet. Um, in your bylaws for single residence B on lots, uh, created prior to January of nineteen eighty-six, which were sometime back in eighteen eighty-eight. Um, that gives us the requirement that our side setback is ten feet. And as I said, the current house is three feet, and we're looking to, um, make the addition as conforming as possible, but not extend the pre-existing non-conformity of three feet, but we've got it setback to five feet.
Well, you're, you're lucky because we got educated at our last meeting about recent decision from the SJC. Um, if you came here two years ago, we would have told you, you couldn't do this because you'd need a variance, and you wouldn't qualify for a variance. And, um, in all their wisdom, they wrote into our zoning bylaw a provision that we can't allow horizontal extensions of non-conformities. But, um, case decided in two thousand and nineteen in the SJC says as long as we conclude that this is not a, a material intensification of, um, non-conformity, we can do it with a special permit, provided we find that it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. So we got a lot more flexibility under that case law than we had under the Needham zoning bylaw.
Yep.
Um, let me just note that, um, your neighbors at twenty-one Warren Street and seventy-three May Street, which are two of the three of butters, have sent in letters in support, um, the planning board had no comment. Um, and, and likewise, the, um, I don't know if we heard from, um, the fire, but we heard from the town engineer and they had no problem with it. Building inspector has no problem with it. Is there anyone on the board that wants to ask a question?
I, I think it's a, a modest addition, and you, you reduce the amount of, uh, the non-conformity, I think it's a, a appropriate.
Well, I don't, I don't see how it's substanti- it could be, you could say it's detrimental to the neighborhood, particularly with two out of three of butters supporting it.
I think they're reducing the non-conformity anyway, that's an improvement. We have the new SJC case, I think, uh, we all want to support people, uh, continuing to age in place and not having to go leave their homes, and so I'm very supportive, it's very attractive, you have a very good architect, it's, uh, it fits in with everything, and I'm, uh, completely supportive, and I think you've established that it, that's a legal pre-existing non-conformity.
What, so you want to make a motion? Oh, sorry, Mr. Friedenberg, our expert.
No, just, I'm having a lot of trouble reading these online plans, my eyes aren't what they used to. Uh, as you're, you're standing facing the house on Warren Street, what would be the side setback on the, the left-hand side?
Yeah, the left side is only three feet currently.
That's the side that you have a current three feet, and you're saying that the addition is going to be?
Five.
Five. Okay, so, you know, I'm sorry, then you're going to have to, which part of, on this plan is the addition?
Uh, I'd say it's marked, the square. It says-
Oh, I'm really having, okay, never mind. I see it now, thank you.
A bigger monitor.
Two glasses.
No, it's a little tough when we have to deal with print things we print out on our home printer. You see it, Peter?
I do, I do, yeah, thank you, thank you, Howard.
Fifty percent. So, uh, let's see, I'd make a motion, um, to approve the special permit uh, for the property of twenty-seven Warren Street, uh, to allow the change, extension, alteration, enlargement, and lawful pre-existing non-conforming building for the, uh, addition of a new first four-floor bathroom.
In accordance with the plans.
In accordance with the plans and application.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Congratulations.
All right.
Thank you.
So, so, so just understand the process, we have to write a decision and it's filed with the town clerk.
Okay.
And, and you can talk to the building inspector, but you maybe have to wait twenty days after you file it before you can pull the building permit?
So, so I want to thank you for your time, I mean, I love living in Needham, so, um, it, this will allow me to stay longer, I think, and I want to thank Daphne for her help in getting us ready for this meeting and for you, all of your time, so.
Thank you, thank you very much, all of you, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations again.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, uh, we are past seven forty-five, so I'll move to eleven Gatewood Drive. Lawrence A. Gordon, two thousand and nineteen trust applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for variance under section seven point five point three and/or MGL forty A, section ten, from applicable minimum lot area requirements of four point two point three of the zoning bylaw, or in the alternative, a special permit under section one point four point six, seven point five point two, and seven point five point three, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw. And a finding pursuant to MGL forty A, section six, permit the demolition, extension, alteration, enlargement, and reconstruction of the lawful pre-existing non-conforming single family dwelling to, um, I guess, add a new single-family dwelling. And the property is located, uh, at eleven Gatewood Drive in the single residence A district. Um, one problem is, is there's no longer a non-conforming ho- house, there's just a hole, but Mr. Junta, why don't you take us to this?
Sure thing, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so as indicated, this is an application relative to the property at eleven Gatewood Drive. It's parcel sixty-eight on assessor's map two eleven. It's located in the single residence A or acre zone. Basically, this is a lot that was created by a subdivision plan that was dated July twenty-first, nineteen sixty-six. The plan was approved by the planning board October fourth, nineteen sixty-six, and endorsed by the planning board in November first, nineteen sixty-six. Duly recorded that year with the registry of deeds. Uh, a few years later, the, the first deed for this lot was, uh, was conveyed, the, the lot was conveyed out for the first time by deed that was dated December fourteenth, nineteen seventy-two, again duly recorded at the registry. And then, uh, basically, the, the property was in the same ownership until this past March, uh, when it was purchased by Lawrence Gordon, or Larry Gordon, who's with us this evening, uh, who is the applicant in this case. Now, Mr. Gordon purchased the property with a view to, towards demolishing the existing single-family house and replacing it with a new single-family house. And to that end, uh, after he purchased the property, uh, he had the, the existing structure demolished, and then worked on new plans for the new house. As the surveyor worked on the plot plan, uh, the surveyor found an issue. But I'm actually getting, getting a little ahead of myself, so let me, let me sort of put that on pause and, and come back and give you some more facts. So, so the lot, as shown on the subdivision plan from nineteen sixty-six that it created, as well as the assessor's map, is supposed to contain forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven square feet. Obviously, that's more than the forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty required in the acre zone, and it also has more than the required amount of frontage. So in nineteen sixty-six, it looked like the lot complied. Uh, and then in nineteen seventy-two, either just before, or as a part of the sale, uh, there was a house built on the property, pursuant to a building permit. That was then expanded in two thousand and again in two thousand and six, uh, and that's the house that is no longer there. Uh, now there's the hole there instead. So the issue that came up when the surveyor, uh, was putting together the plot plan for the new house is that instead of the forty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-seven square feet that the lot was supposed to contain, the surveyor found out that the lot actually contained only forty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-one square feet. That's a shortfall of two thousand three hundred and eighty-nine square feet, and basically renders the lot non-conforming. Now, in this case, uh, this, it appears that this was a survey error. And we feel, and we think that's the case, because when the surveyor looked at this lot in combination with the lot adjacent, directly adjacent to it, the lot directly adjacent to it has essentially the missing area included in its lot, and it actually has more area than it's supposed to have under the subdivision plan. So it really looks like the dividing line between the two lots was put in the wrong place, and when they, and they didn't bother to recalculate the areas, uh, when they, when they put the line in. So it does look like it's just a survey error, and, um, and it's not a matter of there, you know, not being enough raw land. Unfortunately, this lot has got the short end of the six stick, so to speak. So here we are today, um, and Mr. Gordon purchased it to build a new house, he started the process, and all of a sudden he had hit the brakes. So we, we, you know, take, take a look at, well, what can be done? Obviously, we need zoning relief of some sort. We've applied for relief in the alternative. On the firsthand, we've asked for variance, and we feel that that is actually the more appropriate relief, uh, for a number of reasons, which I'll get into a minute. Uh, but if the board does not agree, there's also grounds for a special permit. Now, the reason why we feel that the variance is a better mechanism of relief in this case is that a variance provides a much greater certainty with respect to the property. The issue in this case has to do with the lot, so it doesn't have to really do with the structure from a practical sense, so therefore variance makes more sense from that perspective. A variance would provide for greater flexibility down the road. So, for example, if somebody wanted to put an addition on the house with a variance, as long as the addition met all the applicable dimensional and density requirements, they would be able to proceed with a building permit. If it's treated under a special permit, they have to come back before the board for basically, you know, minor extensions on the outside most likely, because in this case, the issue is the lot. So, and then, um, finally, under the bylaw in Needham, even substandard lots get pretty generous treatment. So lots that were created with, um, what is less than what is now required can have houses built on them, or have houses knocked down, rebuilt, have additions put on, without the need for any zoning relief unless they trigger, you know, relatively narrow criteria. So somebody could put a house, an addition on their house if it meets all the setback requirements, the floor area, area ratio requirements and lot coverage. So basically, we're looking ideally to get the same treatment for this lot. So now, with respect to the conditions for variance, we actually think in this instance, um, we, we meet it. So if the board members have looked at the, the plans submitted, uh, with the application, you'll notice that this lot has a fairly irregular, uncommon shape. Uh, it's a bit like a, a funky puzzle piece, in that it's on the right side going up into the rear of the property, it's highly irregular. Now, the, the property next door to it has a somewhat similar irregularity, but it's not as funky. And I'd say you'd be hard pressed to find, you know, find this generally in the zoning district, uh, where this lot is located. So with that as a backdrop, variance requirements are as follows. There have to be soil conditions, shape of the lot, or topography of the land or structure, not generally affecting the lots in the district. Uh, and literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw would create a hardship. Now, obviously, if you, from what I've just said, we feel that the shape meets the first requirement, it's not generally found in the zoning district. It's, it's fairly obvious that literal enforcement of the bylaw in this case would render the lot completely unusable, uh, and, and results in not just an economic, you know, not just a practical hardship, but a vast economic hardship as well. And then the last requirement on a variance is that the relief is not, uh, a detriment to the public good, and can be granted without a deviation from the intent or purpose of the bylaw. In this case, you've got a lot that, that basically has existed for about fifty years, uh, that has had a house on it for, for I think forty-eight of those years. It's in a single-family residential neighborhood. The idea is to continue to treat it as a single-family residential lot. Uh, and therefore, uh, based on that, we do think that the case for variance, uh, has been made. However, if the board does not agree on the special permit, as the board will recall from a, a recent case that I had, had with the board, Massachusetts General Law's chapter forty A, section seven, was somewhat recently amended to provide that structures that were in existence for at least ten years, without notice of violation, get the status of lawful pre-existing non-conforming structures. So if the board doesn't see a variance as applicable here, this, this structure, the house that was there, would qualify as a pre-existing non-conformity, as it was issued under building permit and was in existence for forty-eight years without any notice of violation. As such, then the provisions of, of forty A, section six, and one point four point six of the bylaw would come into play, and the house could be replaced with a reconstruction that alters and enlarges at the same time, provided the, the replacement is not substantially more detrimental than the existing house. And obviously, we would argue that the proposed new house, inasmuch as it meets all of the dimensional and density requirements, is a single-family house, which is consistent with the use in the zone and the historical use of the property, would therefore meet that test. So we would ask the board actually approve this, uh, as a variance, but if they can't see their way to that, please, uh, approve it as a special permit.
Um, okay, fine, we've, we've had a few comments, the building commissioner has no problem, nor the, um, police, I don't see one from the fire, but I don't think that's an issue. The, uh, health point out, you need a demolition permit, and there's a process for, uh, doing that, but I mean, you've already demolished it, so I don't know if you did it or not.
Hmm.
Uh, that seems a little late, and then they're also pointing out you need to get an improved septic system because there's apparently no sewage available up there. Um, but I would think that's kind of routine part of applying for a building permit.
Yes.
Uh, correct.
Does anyone on the board have a question?
Well, you know, I, I just a, a comment, John, if that's appropriate. I, I do, I do agree with George that the lot does appear to be irregular in shape. Uh, uh, slightly like the one that it, part of the subdivision, but it, it does appear irregular. Uh, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm sympathetic to the, the argument for variance. I, I think, at least how it was presented, appears to meet it. A huge detriment if it, uh, doesn't get rebuilt, and, and nothing is there.
Yeah, John? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Friedenberg.
Uh, George, I, I have a question, I'm very sympathetic to this, uh, this is a terrible situation, man. Uh, George, I'm, I'm O for one tonight, but I'll try another question. Uh, what, why, why doesn't one point four point seven point three apply? If this, if, if this is deemed to be illegally non-conforming?
Uh, I, uh, let me just pull that up, I'm pretty sure that only, that doesn't authorize, uh, reconstructure, reconstruction.
Peter, can we get that site again, please?
Yeah, one point four point seven point three.
Thank you.
Well, so, so really, the, the question is, I mean, I, you certainly can make an argument- Well, so really, the question is, I mean, you certainly can make an argument that it does cover it. But given the relative newness of the statute in this case, I think the, if that's the direction, well, first off, we really would prefer a variance.
I understand.
Right? Because of the reasons I mentioned. But then, second off, even if that applies, I think the building inspector would likely appreciate guidance from the board, a finding essentially that, you know, that the revised statute applies and that therefore this is covered.
I mean, is there anyone from the public that even wants to be heard on this?
I have ten members of ten attendees, and let me just check and see if there's any raised hands. No hands raised on this issue.
Yeah, well, I mean, I agree, this is a terrible situation. And I, everybody's going to be surprised, but I'm inclined to go for a variance so that we can fix this as best it can be fixed. I have a little bit of a problem under one point four point six in that the planning board didn't give us their usual comment, but there's something to the notion that if you voluntarily knock down something, it may lose its non-conforming status. I mean, we're usually confronted with somebody who hasn't knocked it down, who's asking for a permit to knock it down and rebuild it, and I think that's clearly covered by our bylaw. But I think there is a little bit of an issue if you voluntarily knock it down, whether that doesn't cause you to lose your non-conforming status. So I think a variance is the best way to fix it.
So I'm actually troubled by trying to fit this within a special permit for the reasons you just said. It was a voluntary removal. So I think you didn't have that little stub in the lot, you'd have some problems with the variance, but it's a, and don't get me wrong, I'd love to accommodate the problem and no one wants to render this lot completely useless that you spent a lot of money on and you want to build a home. So I'm always supportive of a variance in the right situation. That John Schneider is supportive of a variance in the right situation is, and warms me on this cold November night. So I am supportive of the variance in this situation and help this homeowner out of this pickle, but I don't see this special permit. And we can examine whether the intentional removal of the structure rendered the non-conforming null and void. But I think the variance is the way to address it, and I think the hardship is met here much, much more significantly than my kids need a little mudroom or I need another bathroom or my family is outgrowing the house. So I think this is, that meets the requirements under the statute, in my opinion, and I'd be supportive of that.
Any other comments from the board? I guess we have no one from the public, so.
We have one hand raised, John.
Okay, let's get that person in.
So Morgan Bloom, I'm going to, I'm going to promote you as the panelist.
Hey, everyone, Morgan here.
Could you please give us your address?
Sure, sure. Morgan Blum, fifty-seven Gatewood Drive, just down the street. So I just wanted to make one comment, one question. My comment would be, although we certainly love the gravel pit that's there right now, we'd love to see a new, nice home in the neighborhood. So we're in support of it in that respect. And then just one question, other than the shortfall in the square footage, which is unfortunate, is there any, I haven't seen the architectural plans, is there anything else that would be non-conforming about the setbacks of the new home? Or is it simply just the shortfall in the square footage that you'd be looking for the variance for?
So it's the only non-conformity is the area of the lot. The proposed new house meets all the setbacks, all the density like lot coverage, floor area ratio, height, all those things.
Okay, then we're certainly in favor as a neighbor, whatever input that holds.
Thank you. So, Mr. Goldman, Mr. Tampkin, one of you make a motion, please?
Sure, sure. A move that the applicant's request for a variance under Section Seven Five Three to permit the demolition, extension, alteration, enlargement, and reconstruction of this lawful pre-existing, non-conforming, single, well, actually, that part's not true.
It's just a variance to allow the lot to be a buildable lot.
Right, to permit the demolition and of the existing house.
Which is pretty demolished.
And to permit construction of the new house as set forth on the plans that have been submitted tonight.
I'm not inclined to get into the plans. I mean, I think we should just do something very simple, which is make this lot legal.
A variance from the minimum lot area.
And I don't think we should restrict his plans. He should just deal with the building inspector like any other person who's looking to build a house. I just think we should make the lot legal and then let the building inspector supervise the rest of it. Is that?
So that you're seeking to amend to permit the variance under Seven Five Three, Seven Point Seven Five Point Three to permit this?
To be a buildable lot.
To be a buildable lot.
Yeah, I think that's all we need to do and all we should do. Mr. Tampkin?
I'm thinking a little bit, which is dangerous sometimes, but so just the language of the motion. So it's to move to allow a variance for the property at eleven Gatewood Drive to treat and consider the property as a buildable lot. Period. With a square footage of whatever it is shown on the plan with forty-one thousand, what is it?
Whatever it is.
Yeah, it's forty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-one.
Forty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-one. I'd like to state the actual square footage that we're approving in the motion, or we can write that in.
And for that matter, actually cross-reference the new plan with the accurate square footage. Because the new plan is articulating what the defect is and that's what the measurement will be going forward.
Correct. We don't have to address the home to be constructed or the construction plans, which are all very attractive. But the new plot plan should be referenced. That's what we're approving, a variance.
What if you just do a variance from the minimum lot area provided the lot?
Sounds good.
The lot contains no less than forty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-one square feet.
Agreed. Howard, is that friendly, man? Is that your motion?
I just wonder why it wouldn't be even more clear if there's a survey plan completed. Why not reference that?
It doesn't matter. It's the number that's important. It doesn't.
Right, but so this survey plan now has the number. And it even might even help for conveyancing purposes. Now, it's a plan that's been adopted in the variance.
Either way, the dimensions of the new lot or the dimensions and the plan, I'm comfortable with it.
All right, do we want to start over with the motion?
Let's try to see, okay. So that move the applicant's request for a variance under Section Seven Five Point Three to build a, to build on the existing lot, which measures, what's the square footage again, George?
Forty-one.
Forty-three, five sixty square feet as set forth on the current survey plan.
Forty-one.
Let's see.
George, what is the?
It's forty-one, one seventy-one.
Forty-one, one seventy-one.
Second that, Mr. Tampkin?
I'll second the motion.
Well, in favor.
All right. Congratulations.
Well, not congratulations.
Oh, no.
Glad we could fix, I'm glad we could fix an awful nightmare.
Thank you.
It's a congratulations. Good for you.
Thank you. Thank you, zoning board. Thank you very much. Thank you for your understanding of the issue.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Good luck, sir.
All right. Bye-bye.
Right. Case number four, One Wellesley Avenue. Mr. Donald W. Hollings' applicant has made application to the Board of Appeals for special permit under sections one point four point seven, seven point five point three, and the other applicable sections of the bylaw, as well as a finding pursuant to Section Six of MGL Chapter Forty-Eight to permit the demolition, extension, alteration, enlargement, and reconstruction of lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling and multiple accessory buildings to a new two-family dwelling with an accessory garage. The property is located at One Wellesley Avenue, Needham, in the single residence B District and is numbered three twenty-three Oakland Street, Wellesley. Mr. Junter, are you here on this one also?
Yes, I am.
All right, welcome back.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so as indicated, this is concerning the property at One Wellesley Avenue, but it's actually numbered and known conventionally as three twenty-three Oakland Street, Wellesley. It's shown as parcels forty-five and forty-nine on Sheet One Oh Six of the assessor's map. And it's a relatively large parcel containing thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twelve square feet with a hundred and ten point seventy-eight point seven eight feet of frontage on Wellesley Avenue slash Oakland Street. But the property is currently occupied by an existing one-story bungalow-style two-family house as well as a few commercial, detached commercial structures. The house is divided into the two units, being one on the sort of ground floor or first floor, and then the other unit is in the lower level or the basement level. Now, this was actually a pretty interesting and challenging file to work on because, you know, normally when I come before the board on two families, I have a whole, you know, a whole bunch of information that I can present. Unfortunately, in this case, that's not the situation. When you dig into this, there's very little as far as records in the town of Needham that even mention or recognize the existence of the house at three twenty-three Oakland. There's quite a bit about the other buildings, but next to nothing about the house. So as a, you know, and there's no telling exactly why that is, but my assumption is, given that the front door of the house is actually physically located in Wellesley, the house bears a Wellesley address, then, you know, it looks like Wellesley essentially claimed it and it's been essentially treated as a Wellesley house. So basically, in looking at this, you know, we really have had to look at the records in Wellesley, which do not stack up at all compared to the records in Needham. You know, Needham, I really haven't appreciated until this case just quite how good our records are and how much historical data we have, but we have to work with what we have. So so looking at this on the Wellesley side, you know, there are no historical taxing records around the, you know, from nineteen hundred and nineteen thirty, say, which look back to the use in the early days. But Wellesley does tax it as a two-family. They list it as a two-family on the tax rolls. And they indicate on the tax rolls that the house was built in nineteen thirty-five. But as I'll mention in a minute, that's an apparent erroneous date because we actually have some pretty concrete evidence that shows an earlier date than that for the house. So what we do have as something fairly reliable to rely on from Wellesley is the building inspector, in reviewing the available information and reviewing the billing department file, has said that he looks at this as a pre-existing, non-conforming two-family. And as a part of the materials that were submitted, you have a copy of a letter where he basically says that. So in Needham, really, there's only two things that we can find with respect to evidence. And it's two building permits that were issued for, on the first one, for a carport that was built on the left side of the house, which was in the town of Needham. And then the second one was for an extension out the back, which was also completely in the town of Needham. The first one was nineteen sixty-one and the second one was nineteen sixty-four. Other than the fact that they show the house, and if you look at the plot plans, which I've provided to you, the house is labeled with two addresses. It's labeled as one, number one, and number three twenty-three. I obviously will make the argument that that means that it was recognized as having two units. But it's subject to interpretation. Other than that, there is no relevant information at all in the Needham Building Department file that really can indicate one way or the other as to the historical status of this house, when it was built, how it was occupied, or so on. But, so back to the bit of evidence we have that contradicts the Wellesley assessing department, and that is a plan that's on file with the Registry of Deeds that's dated October first, nineteen thirty-one, that clearly shows the house as existing in the property at that time. You have a copy of that and the materials that are provided as well. So, you know, basically, what we're building up to here is we're seeing that there is some evidence of a house being there. And it looks like certainly now it's treated as a two-family. The Wellesley Building Inspector treats it as a two-family. And we're going to have to dig a little bit more because even now, we're only back to nineteen thirty-one. So there's another interesting bit of information that we can glean from the records of the registry. And that is, in nineteen ten, there was a tax-taking, the town of Wellesley, a tax-taking with respect to a piece of property that included a dwelling. And the owner referenced in that tax-taking, and the way it's described, it matches up with the person who actually owned this property at the time. So based on that tax-taking, which was provided with materials, again, it appears that as of nineteen ten, there was in fact a residence at the property. So now we've got some evidence of a house being there in nineteen ten, nineteen thirty-one. So it looks like we're back to the time period when Needham adopted zoning in nineteen twenty-five, which is our goal. But we still don't have a lot with respect to the use back in those days. So as a result, as a result, Mr. Hollings brought in the services of Mr. Edward W. Gordon, who is somebody who looks at historical houses and sort of does analysis. He went and visited the property a couple of times. He did some additional research on his own. And he prepared a report, which has been provided to you. And as noted in his conclusion, because of the way the house is laid out, because of the features, the architectural features of the house, the apparent age of the house, it's his conclusion that in fact this house existed, certainly as of nineteen twenty-five, as a two-family. And one of the things I'll point out then in connection with that report, you know, he did note that the basement unit is set up in such a way that there is no physical access from the basement to the upper floor. In looking at the ceiling of the basement unit, there's no apparent area where stairs could have been at any time. And there's no evidence of any stairs ever having been removed. So therefore, the basement, which has two means of access, appears to always have been an independent unit. But beyond that, he looked at the bathroom that's located in the basement. And that bathroom, as he noted in his report, is larger than you would typically have for sort of a basement bathroom back in the day. It's large enough to actually contain a sink, a toilet, and a tub. And it's located directly below the bathroom upstairs, which would therefore make it appear that when it was actually, when the house was actually constructed, it was constructed having the two units. So again, you know, if you haven't reviewed his report, you can just go to the end and you certainly see his conclusion there that this was a two-family. So unfortunately, you know, we don't have much else to rely on with respect to the historical use of the property. But we do have these data points, and so it does clearly seem to show that there was a structure there in twenty-five, and there's evidence that it was a two-family. Given the fact that we can't, we don't have the, the depth and breadth of records that we usually have from Needham, but ask that the board consider these materials as leading to an inference that it is more likely than not that this house was there in nineteen twenty-five as a two-family, and that therefore it is a lawful pre-existing non-conforming two-family. Now, with respect to the, this current application, you know, the board probably is, recognizes the property and is familiar with it because it has been the subject of a few different matters before the board. And in fact, when I, when you look at the, the records on file with the town, there's, I don't know how many complaints with respect to the commercial activities that have occurred there over the years. So, so, but again, there's nothing, there's nothing that shows anything about the residential. So, because of the complaints and because of the history as a part of the prior permitting, Mr. Hollings made a concerted effort to reach out to the neighbors and try and address their concerns and come up with a development plan that worked for them, that they could support and made sense for the neighborhood. As I think you can see from the several letters of support that were submitted by neighbors, he's, he did a good job with that, and he achieved the goal. So, you know, some of the things that the neighbors were concerned about is they, is that any replacement structure was going to be sort of up towards the street and not set way back, and that, that it would basically be limited to a two-family and not be more than that. So, that goal was achieved. In addition, you have a landscaping plan that shows quite a bit of proposed landscaping that will provide buffer and screening as well as improve the aesthetics and really clean up what has been a very troublesome property for a long time. With respect to the proposed replacement two-family, that obviously meets all of the dimensional and density requirements of the bylaw. So the only really issue here is the nature of the use. And in that regard, you know, the, the test is set forth in, in in case law and in chapter forty-eight, section six, is really whether or not it's substantially more detrimental. And then under the Needham bylaw, it's also whether it fits in with, fits in with the neighborhood under one point four point seven point four. And we assert that in this case it does. As indicated in the beginning, this lot is vastly oversized at, at almost thirty-seven thousand square feet. This is basically almost four lots worth of property. In fact, as a little side note, you know, it's kind of, really, I look at this in some ways is not really a, a matter of your standard two-family, but this is more an issue of sort of what two units wind up on the property. It's given the size of the property, it's large enough to accommodate a subdivision with, with two, with two separate single-family houses. But obviously, that, that requires a road and a lot of asphalt and, and is contrary to really what this area would otherwise call out for, and certainly contrary to what the neighbors have expressed their desire and intention. So this, this seems to be a, a good way to move forward to, to redevelop the property. The proposed replacement house, therefore, we'd say is in keeping with the neighborhood. It doesn't, its size, scale, location is all consistent and in harmony with the neighborhood, and we'd ask the board to approve the application.
Okay. So I'd like to note that we've got letters of support from Andy and Trish Merzke at three oh nine Oakland. We have a letter of support from Quint and Carolyn Clements at seventy-four Honeywell. We have a letter of support from Hessel Shemery at eleven Wellesley Avenue. We have letter of support from Pam Reed and Steve Pitchkey. I think they live behind the property. I'm not sure. Three thirteen Oakland. We have a letter of support from Jude and Martha Castro, who live at three twenty-three. No, I'm not sure where they, they give us, they didn't give us, oh, I'm sorry, three nineteen Oakland. And I think there was also a letter of support, I'm not seeing right now, from Robin Williams, who lives in the area. The police and fire had no problem. The health department notes you need a demolition permit and have to also deal with sewage. I guess it's gonna come from the town of Wellesley. Building inspector has no issue, and the town engineer has no problem with the project. So I think the first thing the board has to decide is whether this is a repetitive petition because they were here less than two years before. I'm personally of the view that this is dramatically different than what we saw before, and so that ought to be allowed to go forward. Does anyone disagree?
No. We agree. It's, it should go forward.
John? Yes? Mr. Tam, you're muted.
Yeah, I concur. It's dramatically substantially different.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public that wants to be heard tonight? We do have all the letters.
There are eight members, but no hands raised.
Mr. Jenta, we, we don't have any of the usual information about occupancy to prove that this was continuously used as a two-family. Is that right? And there is nothing?
Yeah, I, I, I made multiple inquiries with Wellesley Historical Society, Town of Wellesley. I tried a couple of creative aspects. I did a search with the Library of Congress online. I, I dug through census records. I basically tried to find, and it, it really, not only was there very little in terms of records that I could even look at, but even the records I could look at were, were, you know, basically like seventy percent of the record was missing. So this is, it, it really puts in perspective just how good the records in Needham are because it, it was like, there was, there was just every time I, I went to something to look at it, it either didn't exist or if it was there, it was so vastly incomplete that it wasn't even worth looking at. So no, we don't have, we don't have, like, to Needham, usually we rely on the, the poll tax and the street list and all that, and then, and you know, we have very good records for that going, Needham going all the way back to, I think, nineteen fifteen or nineteen ten. Wellesley, they basically told me they didn't have any of that. So they, they, you know, it's just, unfortunate, you know, it's unfortunate because, you know, the bar has been set high, high in Needham, but it's just, we just don't have that information. So we, but we do have the data points that do seem to show, you know, there is a, there is a line that connects and, you know, granted, it's a little bit of weak in the middle, but it does look like the house was built as a two-family. And given the age of the house, it appears it was built certainly before nineteen twenty-five, and we certainly know it's a two-family today. So the inference would be that all throughout, it continued to be a two-family. You know, in that regard, I mean, one of the things that, that is, that is interesting on this one is the basement having its own, you know, having, having its own sort of entrance and exit and the bathroom down there. And, and the fact that it looks like it was built that way from the get-go really does, to me, lead to that inference of it being a, a continuous two-family throughout.
Well, it's, 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 it's missing. But anybody on the board have a comment or question?
I think it's a nice proposal. It certainly has overwhelming neighborhood support. This was the one, a year or two ago, you came, there, there was issues of yard, nursery. Was that, is this the same one, George?
Yep. Yeah. I, I didn't actually handle that application, but yes, this-
The dog grooming facility?
That's right.
So I, I think it's a great proposal, well-accepted. The question, I guess, is, is the board, in the absence of clear evidence of continuous use, how, how do we deal with that? I, I, I believe you do a good job, George, to establish it's been around pre-zoning code nineteen twenty-five. Just the continuous use. I think at the last meeting on this with your predecessor, there was a big open question about continuous use. So how can we come, work with that?
Before, the question was continuous use, commercial property. The other hearing never got into dwelling unit. It, it was a question of whether they were arguing that they should be able to put up two, two families because they were converting from a commercially used to a less intensive use. And it fell apart when they were not able to prove that both parcels here had been used continuously for commercial purposes. And we turned down the application. I don't know. I'll just express my view. I, I don't, I don't think it's a perfect case, but given the attractiveness of the proposal and the support from the neighborhood, I'm prepared to overlook the gaps in the evidence and move forward.
And if I may, I mean, one thing we do have here is you do have a statement from the building inspector of Wellesley, being the zoning enforcement officer of Wellesley, making his determination that it qualifies as a pre-existing nonconformity. Granted, it's not exactly the same, but it certainly is a, a important data point. It's an important factor, and certainly a way to, for example, distinguish this from other situations that might come up in Needham, is that you do have that opinion. Also, this is a rare, rare circumstance where the building inspector in Needham actually issued a letter of support, you know, prior to the process, which I don't know, you know, I don't know that I've ever had that happen in any case. So I think that goes a long way as well towards speaking to the, the, you know, in as much as, as Mr. Roach is the zoning enforcement officer in Needham, that he's comfortable with this speaks a lot towards the application itself as well.
So let me jump in here, and so George sort of took the wind out of my comfort in that you have two building inspectors supporting the project, making finding, findings in their opinions that it's a pre-existing nonconforming structure. And we have, I think, reasonable evidence from the research that George has presented, both predating twenty-five and current use and the historical research. So yes, is it possible that any time within that long span of time that it was abandoned? I don't see anything contrary to that. I look at the preponderance of the evidence before me. It, it, he, he has the two bookends and the last, several proposals for this use of this property were rejected by this board. The neighbors were quite upset about it. The current project is supported by the neighbors, and I think George is correct. They could do a subdivision and build two single formal homes, which are actually apparently not supported by the, the residents in the neighborhood. Maybe they would be. I don't know. But um, all in all, I, I, I think it's, it's certainly not perfect in the standards that we have required or established. But we also have a very unique situation where it's in two different towns. And Wellesley adopted it. They stole the property somewhere along the line. So in the spirit of the Thanksgiving football game that we won't have this year, I, I'm very supportive of the project, and I can make the, be comfortable making the finding that it was, it's a lawful pre-existing two-family.
Anyone else wanna make a comment, or we have enough?
I'll just add that, you know, I think in addition to all of those things that make this a unique situation, also the structure of the two-family in the basement and not having any interior access from one to the other is pretty unique and nothing that we've really seen before. So I just think that adds another unique piece of information here that makes us not as difficult, you know, to accept the fact that there isn't as much evidence as we normally would require.
Yes, and in the end, we have an opinion of an expert that comes to the conclusion that we need to come to.
Yep.
All right. We're ready. Someone wanna make a motion?
Sure. I'll, I'll move that the applicant's petition under, for special permit under sections one four seven and seven five three to permit the demolition-
One point four point six, it is.
It, it's, it's one point four point seven point four.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
One point four point what?
Seven point four.
So a special permit be allowed under section one point four point seven point four and seven point five point three to permit the demolition, extension, or alteration, enlargement, or reconstruction of this lawful pre-existing nonconforming two-family dwelling and multiple accessory buildings to a new two-family dwelling with an accessory garage pursuant to the plans that have been submitted.
And I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations, finally.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, everybody. Thank you.
Daphne, I'm now going to recuse myself from the next-
Okay. Let me just go ahead, and I'm gonna push you in the holding room so that that, I mean-
The holding room. All right. They're locking me in a holding room, and you'll invite me back for the informal after the hearing.
All right.
All right.
Put on hold. So you've been put on hold. All right.
Move on to case number five, one eighty-two and one ninety Edgewater Drive. David M. Nectow, Republican Trust applicant, has made application to the Board of Appeals for special permit under sections three point three, three D E and I, seven point five point two, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to allow the demolition of the existing house on one eighty-two Edgewater Drive and to combine the land with one ninety Edgewater Drive and construct a pool and associated decking, a cabana, a tennis court, and walking paths. Properties located at one eighty-two and one ninety Edgewater Drive in the single residence A district. And who is here on this application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mike Crowe, representing the applicant.
Oh, there you are.
I'll, I'll be brief because we have a, a, a good team of experts here that will go into much more detail that you'll be interested in than, than I can. But in a very simple term, you, you're familiar with one ninety Edgewater Drive, I'm sure, because it's been here a couple of times seeking to build a swimming pool. Last permit a couple of years ago was issued when the bylaw was changed and special permit did issue to build a pool, although the applicant never went forward with that project. The opportunity has arisen with his neighbor next door to purchase that lot, which is one point seven acres, one, and that's one eighty-two Edgewater Drive. And Mr. Nectow has gone ahead and entered into a purchase and sale agreement subject to approval of the zoning board to, to purchase that lot, which hopefully will close Friday, depending on what happens tonight. Earlier tonight, we had our second hearing with the Needham Conservation Commission, and they approved the project and the plans that were submitted to this board. So anything that happens here will obviously be subject to that notice of intent that's going to be issued from the Conservation Commission. The, the, the location of the property, as I said, is now will be two point seven acres. It is within the floodplain district on the Charles River. And because of that, it's subject to three point three point six. And the purpose of the floodplain district is to protect the stream to rivers and other watercourses adjoining lands against hazards of flooding, preserve, maintain groundwater table, and in general, to protect the community against detrimental use and development of such properties. Applicable concerns obviously are foundation elevations and structures that will, you know, not be affected by flooding, preservation of natural water channels, and retention of existing floodwater storage capacity. All those will be addressed by the experts, and I'm gonna just go really quickly over it, that the pool itself i- is located within the riverfront area, but mostly within the footprint of existing lawn and an existing basketball court. It's being built within a minimal footprint and out of the ground to minimize the site disturbance of floodplain displacement. The decking is located within a forest strip of land. It is proposed to be on stilts to minimize the effect on the property. The proposed cabana is located directly adjacent to the decking and is also going to be on stilts. The tennis court is located partially within the riverfront area, but is limited to previously disturbed areas such as the existing house at one eighty-two Edgewater Drive and the lawn there. Walking pass will be proposed to leave from the tennis courts to the pool, the decking, and the existing lawn. The existing, the proposed design i- is very extensive and has minimal impact on the floodplain. The final result actually creates storage. All gathering spaces are elevated on stilts and do not impact the ground planes infiltrated or storage capacity. Floodwater storage capacity compensation will actually be increased by ratio 7 to 1, as shown on the plans the experts will be presenting to you, substantially increasing the storage capacity. The applicant basically has added 1.7 acres of land to his property. He's going to tear down the house at 182 Edgewater Drive and develop a recreational area that will fit into the natural habitat and protect the existing land from flooding. The design meets the criteria of the bylaw, and improvements will not be detrimental and dangerous to the neighborhood, and it consistent with the intent and general purposes of bylaw. I'm going to go to, just very briefly-
Yeah, but let me stop you. If the Conservation Commission has approved this, and we've all looked at the plans, the bottom line is, is that you're actually improving the flood storage. I don't think we need to go through a lot of presentations unless there are members of the board who have a question or, or want to hear it.
I will certainly want to address that.
Is Howard, Mr. Friedberg, Kathy, any of you feel we need further presentation? Knowing it's been approved by the CONCON?
I, I, I agree with you, that the CONCON is taking a close look at it, and, and the issue really is about the drainage and the runoff, the requirements. I'm confident that it's been dealt with appropriately.
Kathy, Mr. Friedberg?
I agree with that.
Mr. Friedenberg?
The only question I had, Mr. Crowe, did the town, the town engineer respond to the drainage study? Has anyone discussed that with him?
I, I don't, go ahead. I, I don't believe that he had any issues with it, but I'm not sure if we've gotten a direct response on that issue. But CONCON, obviously, is going to have a say on the drainage as well.
I've, I've also spoke with the town engineer, if I could add to that, and he also deferred over to the Conservation Commission because of, of that staff and review.
All right, thanks. I, I just, I just don't think we need to spend a lot of everyone's time. They've approved it, and it makes sense to me. It's beautiful. It's, it's, it's a, it's a nice thing to do.
Thanks. We're really excited, thank you. I'd like to ask, Mr. Nectow, is it a clay tennis court or hard?
Howard, at my age, I'm still able to play on hard court, so we're going to make this a hard court.
Wow.
It's not a paddle court.
Yes, but this, does this conflict with your paddle commitments?
No, I have none. I'm playing tennis 12 months a year, so I'm better off focusing on one, but paddle.
All right, so Mr. Friedenberg, would you sit on this one along with us, and someone prepared to make a motion?
I guess that'd be me. All right. Move that we issue a special permit under sections 3.3 DE and I, and 7.5.2 of the bylaw to allow the demolition of the existing house of 182 Edgewater Drive and to combine the land with 190 Edgewater Drive for the construction of a pool and associated decking, cabana, tennis court, and walking paths.
Second that?
I second that motion. Thank you, Peter.
Before we go down it, I want to note the planning board had no comment, nor the police, nor the fire. And Daphne, is there anyone here from the public I forgot to ask that wants to be here on this?
Nobody with raised hands, John.
Good. Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, team. Appreciate it.
Everybody.
Good luck, Mr. Nectow.
Thanks, Howard, appreciate it.
Bye, Michael.
Thank you, Daphne, for all your help. Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody, good night.
Yeah, you too.
You too, Mike, nice to see you.
All right, so we have one final matter, 260 262 Rosemary Street. We approved a special permit for a demolition and reconstruction of a two-family house-
Let me get Jonathan back in. Oh, you don't, you-
Leave him in the holding cell.
Overnight, I think you meant overnight.
Overnight.
You know, I just didn't think we needed to hear to a, a lot of presentations if the CONCON approved.
All right, well, I removed him, so he's back.
He doesn't look happy.
They didn't want you back.
Yeah, we wanted to leave him there overnight.
It was very, that was very lonely there. A blank screen, and I figured I can't touch it or I'll be disconnected and try to log in there, like the normal people, which is impossible.
All right, so our, our last matter is 262 62 Rosemary Street. We issued a special permit allowing reconstruction of an old two-family house with a new two-family house. And as, as I recall, the, you know, principal issue is the next-door neighbor, one of the house moved forward so it didn't block their view. And we ultimately arrived to the compromise where the developer moved to two feet forward. The house is all built. The plans that he presented for the special permit showed the attic staying as empty space. I look back at the decision, Mr. Jenta, I think, or someone described it as bonus space in the attic. It's now decided he liked to build it out. Building inspector didn't want to issue a building permit without it coming back to us. I made a preliminary determination that, in the context of what we had decided and the issues before, that this was not really a material matter, and it could be dealt with informally as a plan substitution. And if the other board members agree with us, we'll go forward that way, but why don't we let Mr. Kogan, since he came, say anything else to say in favor of this? And there's Mr. Jenta.
That's right. Thank you, Daphne, for, for letting me back in. Yes, so, so I actually handled the initial application, the initial approval, the two-family. And Mr. Chairman, your, your recollection is spot on. The issue was the, the neighbor on one side having a concern about views to see Rosemary Pond. So, so now the issue is the prospective purchaser for one of the units, and they want to take the attic space or the half-story above space and finish it for bedroom purposes. The initial plans showed it as finished space, but it didn't show it designated as bedroom. So it basically was an open but finished space. And so the building inspector, looking at those plans, and the fact that the board in the decision, in the body of the decision, referenced that each of the units were going to have, I think, three bedrooms, he was uncomfortable allowing it to proceed on just the building permit. But I will note, you know, if you actually look at the findings and the decision portion of the decision, there's no specific finding as to the bedrooms, and there's no condition or incorporation in the, in the, in the actual decision portion as to the number of bedrooms. You know, the, the question comes up and of, I know in a, in one other case, the question came up during the hearing of, well, what if they finish off the basement, or what if they finish off the attic? And I think it was, it might have been, might have been Michael Tadoli's project down on, down on Grant, no, not Grant.
Or near the Needham Bank?
No, the one, down, down in, down by where, sort of in Ron Ruth's neck of the woods. And you may remember, the neighborhood was quite active down there. And I think that was one of the issues. And I remember a discussion being had about, basically, you know, once the, the outside is approved, then what you do on the inside is, you know, as long as the inside use complies with the bylaw, then the number of bedrooms is largely irrelevant, whether somebody has a bedroom versus an office, or an office versus a bedroom, or a playroom versus a, an office, you know, basically was irrelevant. So, so this kind of came up to me as a surprise, and, and Alex Kogan asked me to, to come in tonight to address this. So, you know, my, my, I would request the board to handle this as an informal, because it's certainly within the four corners of the, of the approval, both in the decision itself and in terms of, you know, the overall plan, even though it wasn't depicted as, as bedroom space, it was depicted as finished space. So the change from finished to bedroom is not a, you know, substantial material change, I'd argue.
Yeah. I, I, I personally don't have a concern. I don't think I would have had a concern back then if you had said you're putting a bedroom up there rather than a playroom or an office. I mean, it's finished, it's finished. Our concern, and we've talked about this a number of times, where it's allegedly unfinished. And that, that's a concern of what happens in the future, and I think that was the one you were talking about. We've had that in a couple applications. So I, I sort of agree. I think it's de minimis. I think the plan substitution is fine, and I really would treat it as an informal substitution. I, I don't see anything in our decision, nor my memory, that was a problem with how many bedrooms.
And I, I concur. I, I think this is a, not a material change, and the fact that it was highlighted earlier in the plans as being finished, the use of what, what type of finished bedroom or office, I don't think is material. So I've, in support of this change, support the change.
All right, so someone want to move to allow substitution of plans?
I'd make a motion to allow the substitution of, of the plans as submitted with the, by the applicant.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good. So we just need to discuss who is going to write what decisions?
Well, Greendale's been continued, so I guess I can't volunteer for that one.
Well, you can volunteer.
But I knew, I, I knew Peter was going to volunteer for that one.
Peter probably has the one Wellesley has.
Friedenberg, since he, I think, I think he sat on Edgewater, would you, would you write that Edgewater decision?
Sure, boy, I could see that coming, okay.
And, and, and there ought to be a model, if you want to look at it, from what we did in 2015, when we approved a pool for the backside of the drive.
Yep.
I can take number three, 11 Gateway, the variance.
Okay.
I'll take Livingstone, number two, Warren Street.
Okay, and I'll do, I'll do what?
From Wellesley?
Yeah, one Wellesley is mine.
And I can do the substitution.
Deal. Hey, just a quick note, I was, I had logged on at 7:15, and I did it a different way. I just had the Zoom number, so I just added the Zoom code. And then I was, I saw everybody at 7:30, but I guess nobody can see me, so then I closed out and then came back in, double-clicking the email. But that's the first time it's happened where I, I was, couldn't be heard, I was seen but not heard.
Well-
What was the issue?
That's the public entrance.
No, you came into the public, you were an attendee, and so at that moment, I wasn't looking at who was attending at that point, because you're just starting. We get, we had up to 10 people in that area, so I don't really start looking until we start what John says, are there any comments from the public? So if you'd been in there, probably, you know, I just didn't check.
I kept waving and talking, and nobody could hear me. So I guess the moral of stories, always come in, double-click it through the email.
And if you go in, I logged in at 7:15, there was no, no one there. Roger got on there maybe about 7:20, then I heard the dog barking and just audio.
Oh, that one, at 7:15, oh, that's totally different. It was, it was Roger. He's a little rusty on webinars, because you remember, he was the one who, who launched us way back in April. But once, once we bought a lot of licenses, then he trained everybody, and all those people have been doing these, and some of them do, you know, like Clay does, probably like six, seven meetings a month. So, you know, Roger, you know, just launched, he launched, yeah, he, it was called delegation, so he-
My, my only recommendation, my only recommendation as we, if we continue with Zoom for a long time, is that when you have a recusal and you're put into the waiting room, have some music or something, refreshments or something.
Something to drink.
Everybody have a wonderful and happy and healthy Thanksgiving.
All right.
Daphne, great job at, at running this, you, you're proficient.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All right.
So moved.
Thank you, everybody. Happy holidays.
Thank you.